Call to order, the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees for Tuesday, December 12, 2023. Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item is to approve the minutes of the November 21, 2023 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of the Village Board of Trustees' meeting of November 21, 2023.
Second.
Any proposed changes? Hearing non, will call vote.
Jesse Pashma?
Aye.
Jesse Braden? Jesse Siffler?
Abstain.
Jesse Fisher?
Aye.
Jesse Burns?
Aye.
Jesse Bink?
Abstain.
Please just the President's report.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. One, two, three. I think you need to vote on this to pass it, don't you?
No, no, I think, oh, you, oh, I'm sorry, you, two extensions.
Yeah.
Yes, approved, right, you're right, good catch.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Um, on the 150th anniversary of Hinsdale for the Holidays this Saturday, December 16th, is a free holiday event in Burlington Park from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This fun event features cookie decorations, decorating, horse drawn carriage rides, and visits with Santa. The Carolan and Bell thank you. On behalf of the Village Board and staff of the Village of Hinsdale, I want to thank the Plan Commission members, Julie Cernovich, Cynthia Curry, and Scott Moore, for their efforts to restore the memorial buildings 120, 1929 clock bell tower and place the 1973 Centennial Carillon. How do you spell that word? Carolons. The Carolan and Bell was a crowning touch to the tree lighting ceremony in December 1. This will be the last meeting of this year, and I want, as the holiday season approaches, we started a year, I'd like to thank the Village Board for all their hard work and accomplishments in 2023. I'd like to thank the staff for all their hard work this year, and thank the numerous residents who have donated their time and talents to furthering the village in many capacities, including on boards and commissions. And again, thanks to the staff, so happy holidays to all. The next item up is approve the salary increase for the Village Manager. This year, I have recommended to, recommended to trustees that we improve an increase for Kathleen's salary by 3.5 percent. Can I have a motion with respect to that?
Move to approve an increase of the Village Manager's salary by 3.5 percent.
Second.
Any discussion? Will call vote?
Jesse Pashma?
Aye.
Jesse Braden? Jesse Siffler?
Aye.
Jesse Fisher?
Aye.
Jesse Burns?
Aye.
Jesse Bink?
Aye.
Okay, citizen's petition, any citizen wishing to speak on any matter on or off the agenda, there's an opportunity now, and there's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Excuse me, anybody wish to speak?
Tom, Tom, do you want comments now on Sixth Street, or do you want them after the other business?
You do now.
Good evening. My name is Bill Harlow. My family and I live at 144 East Sixth Street. I would like to address the proposed plans for redoing four block portion of Sixth between Garfield and County Line. As you know, I came before you all last year. I'd asked for some pothole repairs on Sixth Street. Village Manager Kathleen Dargano made sure those minor repairs were done without delay, and we appreciate that the village was responsive to that request. I also want to express appreciation to President Colley and Trustee Burns and the staff who gave us prior hour to this meeting to have an initial conversation on the topic of Sixth Street, which was useful and might inform some of what I'm about to say. So knowing that the Flag Creek Water Reclamation District mandated separation of storm and sewer lines, and that they would have to be completed on Sixth Street, and that the master infrastructure plan also called for redoing Sixth Street, I have brought up this topic repeatedly at the Historic Preservation Commission over the course of this year, including at a meeting that was attended by our Village Manager. Indeed, Sixth Street has been on the HPC's continuing business agenda for most of this year. In other words, residents' interest in the plans for Sixth Street has been both well-known and publicly stated. Nonetheless, we were disappointed, to say the least, that residents were not included in any of the discussions in the past months about how the village might move forward with plans for Sixth Street. And actually, we first learned of the current plan through an online article posted on The Patch around Thanksgiving. And it's only now, several weeks later, two weeks before Christmas, that the village has been in communication by letter with most of the Sixth Street's residents about its proposal. Unlike, as was done for the block of First between Park and Elm several years ago, which was an all-brick reconstruction, which was completed as a model for the remaining brick streets in the future, this plan, as you know, calls for replacing the brick blocks of Sixth between Garfield and County Line with asphalt, albeit with brick intersections and crosswalks. The letter we received last Friday also states that if Sixth Street's residents want the street to be maintained as is, all brick, that we would have to pay for the difference. The number that was presented us this evening is $2 million that the residents would be expected to cover in order for brick to remain. The plan has also called for narrowing Sixth Street by several feet to make it more uniform with other village streets. Our understanding is this would be done by widening the parkway on the south side of the street, which would be highly problematic from our point of view. Most of the driveway aprons affected by this proposed change are made of antique bricks or pavers. They are not concrete or asphalt. It would be very costly and difficult, if not impossible, for many of us to find matching materials to extend our driveways. The current width of Sixth Street, which has been its width since the 1890s, is in accord with the original plan for the street, just as Fourth Street has always had a wide median between Oak and Park. The current width, in other words, is neither a mistake nor a burden to the village. Instead, the current dimensions of Sixth Street are both historical and true to the original 19th century planning of Mr. Robbins' plan for that neighborhood. President Colley did, in his comments in the last hour, say that the village was willing to look again at that width question. So where does this leave us? These plans, as presented, are a huge disappointment and, frankly, unacceptable to most of us on the blocks. First and foremost, the few remaining brick blocks of Sixth and First Streets and Park Avenue north of the tracks are a historical asset to the village. Indeed, the relevant parts of Sixth and First fall within the Robbins Park Historic District, which has been a National Register Historic District since 2008. Like our historic downtown, which is also a National Register Historic District, the Robbins Park Historic District undeniably adds both term and residential value to our town. The district's historic character, which is already threatened by continuing residential tear downs, would be greatly undermined if we lost Sixth and First Streets, which were first laid with brick in the 1890s. Because we are not a home rural municipality, and there are some good reasons not to be, there is a limit to what we can do as a village to stem the tear down tying other than offer incentives to keep historic homes. The HPC and the Village Board have worked diligently over the past few years to rewrite Title 14 of our zoning code to provide these incentives. And happily, these changes have been very well received by the residents of the village. Unlike private homes, our few remaining brick streets are a village-owned asset. Only the village, not a private property owner, can effect tear down our streets. Sadly, the proposal put forward by the village does just that. And I find it ironic, if not hypocritical, to encourage and indeed implore residents to preserve historically significant homes if we, as a municipality, are unwilling to save our common historic public assets. The letter we received from the village also states that, quote, "The village is concerned that devoting a disproportionately large amount of the village's funds to just one street would be unfair to Hinsdale residents who do not live on Sixth Street." This makes no sense to me. To give just one example of why not, I would ask, did residents who don't live on Garfield and were still waiting for a first round of repaving, such as those of us who live on Sixth, complain when South Garfield Avenue was redone twice in as many decades, first in asphalt and now more recently in concrete? No, we did not. Was there a concern that Garfield residents were receiving extraordinary attention or favoritism? No. Were Garfield residents asked to pay for the luxury of a concrete road from 55th to First Street? Again, no. Regarding Sixth Street, a February 1974 Chicago Sun-Times article details how the village's few remaining brick streets needed some repair. A resident of Sixth Street at that time, Charles Cushing, is, quote, "Among several dozen homeowners who want to save the bricks," who, quote, "Want to save them from a blanket of concrete or asphalt." The article continues, "The objection in the eyes of the Village Board members is the cost. Well, we all know how that ended. The village decided to keep all brick. Now, 50 years later, we are confronted with exactly the same scenario, and we are asking this board to make the same decision as your predecessors did half a century ago." The residents of Hinsdale have long been dedicated to preserving our past, to preserving part of what makes our village so special and appealing. As part of its centennial commemoration 50 years ago in 1973, residents established the Hinsdale Historical Society, which has been dedicated ever since to preserving our past. The village, in response and working with residents, donated the land on Clay Street on which the Hinsdale History Museum currently sits. Working with determined residents, the village also saved the historic Highlands Station, which the Burlington Railroad wished to tear down and replace with a commuter shelter. Again, with residents, the village also worked to make sure that the Brush Hill-Fullersburg District, where York Road intersects with Ogden, did not come to resemble Ogden as it looks with its strip malls and towns to our west. Residents in the village worked together to save both the Manuel Hall and the Zook Home and Studio, and Village Land in KLM was dedicated to the Zook preservation effort. In my own time on the Village Board, we replaced the failing WPA-era stone retaining wall in Burlington Park with a new stone wall, even though a plain concrete wall would have been more economical. Why? Because it was the right way to do it. We knew that, and we didn't skimp and we didn't cut corners. We also worked hand in hand to make sure that the Oak Street Bridge, which had to be replaced, was redone in a historically sensitive manner, and we spent additional funds to get the job done right, such as paying to put ComEd's electrical lines underground on those blocks of oak connecting Chicago Avenue and Walnut Street. In short, the precedent for full village support of historical preservation is well-established over many decades. I know most, if not all, of you on the board are sympathetic to historical preservation in Hinsdale, and I don't believe that you would approve the changes in Title 14 if that were not the case. I would suggest that it is now time again for the village to step up and do what's right for our residential historic district. Repave Sixth Street and in the future, First Street, all in brick, and keep Sixth at its currently historically accurate width, the way it has been for 130 years. It is time again to preserve our past for the future, just as those who came before us have done, and we hope those who follow us will do in the years to come. Thank you.
Bill?
Yes?
How many, how many homes are on Sixth between Garfield and County Line?
Uh, I think that depends on whether you're talking about houses or Sixth Street addresses. It's an excess of 30. I mean, there are homes that have a Sixth Street frontage, but it's not their front yard, it's their side yard. And there are three homes that actually run all the way through between Fifth and Sixth. One of them has a driveway on Sixth, the other two have their driveways on Fifth, but their property abuts the Sixth Street Parkway on the north. So it kind of depends on how you-
It depends. Okay, thank you.
Slice and dice it.
Anyone else?
All right, hello. Once again, thank you all for coming here again. And yes, my name is still Kyle Comstock, this is still Benjamin Comstock, and I kind of feel like I'm the Lorax speaking for the babies, the way he spoke for the trees in the Dr. Seuss book. But I did want to say that, uh, mission accomplished. I actually managed to force the medical office building to install baby changing tables in their first floor bathrooms where they had pediatrician offices. So I am happy about that, that it did manage to get done. I did want to say that, at times during my petition and while I was speaking, I've always felt that the more local politics are, the better it is. At times, I did feel like I was hitting a bit of a brick wall, calling and talking to different people and not making the progress that I wanted to make, but I did get over 100 people to sign my petition. And I, uh, did want to say that I did appreciate the support from the people that helped out. I also want to say that, uh, after doing this, I would like to enter my hat into the ring. I plan on turning in an application to be on the Hinsdale Community Development Staff. I have a degree in construction management. I've been employed since I was 17. I managed to put enough pressure on this property manager to put in these baby changing tables that they said that they would do sometime, but wouldn't give us a time, to they would do it in six months, to now they put it in. And that was all done over the course of me speaking here three times. So, uh, that's pretty much all I want to say. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for giving me the time to exercise my First Amendment right, and, uh, thank you for helping show support to our next generation.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday.
You too.
Anybody else?
Hello, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Jen Reenan, and I live in the Orland P. Bassett House, also known as the American Beauty House, on the corner of Sixth and Oak. My home, like the district it resides in, is listed on the National Register for Historic Places. We have been residents of Hinsdale for almost eight years and took great pride in restoring our house after a terrible roof fire in 2018. I would like to start by thanking all of you, the trustees, as well as the village staff, for all of your service to this village and for your effort to make this a truly wonderful place to live. I must admit, though, that I was disappointed by the lack of communication and discussion related to Sixth Street to date, as well as the rather insensitive letter, in my opinion, that was hand-delivered on Friday. Back in May, I wrote to the village inquiring about the plans as rumors were flying around, and was told that the village had, had received numerous inquiries related to Sixth and would be in touch. The next thing that happened was The Patch article a few weeks ago, followed by the letter giving us all relatively short notice at a very busy time of year about a special meeting to begin this dialogue in earnest. Nonetheless, I am hopeful that we can all listen to each other's concerns and thoughtfully collaborate with each other going forward to do what is best for Sixth Street and for Hinsdale. My biggest concerns and questions, or many of my concerns and questions, have been relayed already via email to you and to the village administration, so I will not elaborate on everything. But I do want to take the public opportunity to ask that you make sure that the economic case for asphalt versus brick has been carefully considered over the long term and takes into account the fact that according to our longest residing residents on Sixth Street for a decade, there has been minimal work done on Sixth, while other streets have been packed and repaved numerous times. We know that other Chicago suburbs, including Oak Park, have determined that there is a long-term economic and environmental advantage to repaving with brick as opposed to using asphalt. I would like to understand why Hinsdale came to a different conclusion and what analysis has led to the conclusion that was made. The other important thing for me is perhaps obvious, given my, no pun intended, history, but nonetheless critical to state. I believe that all of Hinsdale's brick streets, including Sixth Street, are village treasures and should be protected by the village. Many cities like Rockford and Fort Wayne, Indiana, actually have ordinances to preserve and protect their brick streets. At a minimum, the village should be required to obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission when doing exterior renovations, proposed exterior renovations in historic districts like Robbins Park. This is truly an opportunity for Hinsdale and one of the very few fully in its control to take a public stand on the side of historic preservation. And some may ask, why saving this brick street is important? Why preserving beautiful or historical, historical architecture or streetscaping is important? Those are legitimate questions, given the many problems we face in society. But I believe, to quote something I read, that historic preservation does much more than preserve bricks and mortar. It recognizes that our built history connects us in tangible ways with our past and provides context for the places we occupy and the world we live in. It is good to question who and where we were in the past, who and what we are now, and where we are going. As a former history major, these are important questions for all humans to think about and something that I have encouraged my children to do as well. No, not everything can nor should stay the same, but old places like Sixth Street are literally the landmarks of our identity as a village. And in a world that is constantly changing, can provide the people who walk down it, and there are many people, not just Sixth Street residents, with a sense of being part of the human continuum. Having places like that in Hinsdale is truly a gift for all of its residents, not just those who, of us who live on it, and is the reason why we have so many people riding and biking down Sixth Street daily. In conclusion, I believe that rehabilitating historic properties and features conserve taxpayer dollars, conserves our local heritage, and conserves the natural environment. I do hope that you reconsider the proposed plan, and thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Laurel Harlow, for any of you who don't know me. I am going to follow on, um, from what Bill said and Jen said, I would like to just address a little bit of the landscape, our streets in, um, the Robbins Park Historic District and our Historic Overlay District, how they fit into that. All of the streets in Hinsdale would fall under the rubric of landscape structures, but Sixth Street and First Street are the only two that are recognized in the National Register of Historic Places application for the Robbins Park District, uh, which earns them the qualification of historic landscape structures. We know from Historical Society records that they were laid in 1891 to 1892. That means that they are 130 years old this year. Mentions of the landscape occur with such repetition in the Robbins Park Historic District application that its conclusion attributes equal significance to architecture and surrounding context, meaning landscape. Quote, "The exceptional 19th and 20th century domestic architecture and planning trends," which means the street layouts, the grid, and then the curvilinear section in the middle, "exhibited in the residential subdivisions of the Robbins Park Historic District in Hinsdale, Illinois genuinely express elite development and railroad suburbanization in one of Chicago's finest outlying communities." And it continues, "Today, Robbins Park is recognizable with its cohesive character and alluring landscape. Although the tear down trend has infiltrated this historic community over the past decade or two, an intact grouping of well-designed homes remains within the beautiful and well-preserved landscape in the Robbins Park Historic District." And that was in 2008. Photographs of both streets are included in the survey. Interestingly, First Street is shown in two separate photos in front of residences, both in the 300 block of First Street. Sixth, Sixth Street is included with a picture of the street itself, viewed looking west from the 300 block. And so the significance of that is that these two streets are being viewed with the same weight as the contributing architectural structures. Hinsdale's new Historic Overlay District includes six evaluation criteria. They are actually similar to criteria found in the Historic District application, and they are also similar to, um, criteria that are on the local landmark application. If we were to try to locally landmark a house, which is the strongest, um, as you know, the strongest protection that it can have. Um, in order to be included on the historically significant structures property list, a property must meet one or more of the criteria. Looking at these with the lens of Sixth Street, one, it is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history. Sixth Street was the street chosen by William Robbins to build his permanent residence at 425 East Sixth, and it's also the street of the Orland Bassett House, whose owner developed and grew the American Beauty Rose. So we know, based on the activities of these two historical figures, that there was a lot of traffic on Sixth Street. Um, it was an active participant in Hinsdale's history. Two, it is associated with the lives of persons significant in our past. Again, William Robbins and Orland Bassett to start. Three, it embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. Sixth Street is a living example of late 19th century brick road construction. Uh, four, it yields or may be likely to yield information important to history or prehistory, not applicable. Five, it has significance in local, regional, state, or national history, architecture, archaeology, engineering, or culture. Again, it's the people who lived on Sixth Street when it was first platted, that make it relevant. Six, it is a source of civic pride or identity for the community. Sixth Street and its brick counterpart, First Street, are considered by many to be village treasures. They impart a sense of place and community and history. They are the equivalent of quaint cobblestone streets in foreign cities that we all love to visit. Residents from all over the village come to walk along the brick streets, and from our intersection at Sixth and Park, we have even seen wedding parties taking their photos at our intersection. The resurfacing of Sixth Street presents the village with an opportunity to demonstrate our village's commitment to preservation and to upholding the value of our historic district. That the brick sections of Sixth Street and First Street are historic landscape structures does not mean that they shouldn't be maintained and updated for today's needs. More than 100 years of service from these streets has made it possible to prioritize other roads and infrastructure, just like the historic homes that we celebrate when they are saved and modernized, the most recent example of which is Mimi Collins' magnificent restoration of 420 South Park. So too, our brick streets need modern infrastructure underneath them with functioning curbs and gutters. But just as a landmarked house can make changes to the interior but not the exterior, the brick streets should be resurfaced in historic brick pavers that maintain their nature and quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. Is it okay if we get up together?
Sure.
Okay. Nice to meet you and thank you for having us. Melissa Kinsler, 218 East Sixth Street. My home was built in 1924.
I'm Lael Falls. I live at 222 East Sixth Street, and my house was built in 1892.
So everyone else, I think, said a lot of these arguments much more eloquently than I was prepared to do so tonight. Uh, but I guess I would like to just reiterate two things. Um, just the commitment to preservation and then sort of the village treasure. Um, so the commitment to preservation and the character of our street is what drew both of us to purchase our homes and invest in them significantly over the past year. Um, both of our homes were on the kitchen walk this past year, and we feel like we and many of our residents on the street are doing our part to invest in historic preservation and uphold that character and uniqueness of our community. Um, and I think this is just the prime example for the village to do their part and save the street for historic preservation. Um, so that's point one. And then point two is just, um, we heard a lot about the math and that it's un- and that it's unfair to spend two million dollars on thirty homes, but I think you can, if you speak to people in the community, and I hate to reference social media because it's anecdotal, but it's not just our thirty people. It is the village treasure. You know, there were dozens and dozens and dozens of comments from non-residents about save this village treasure. Laurel said it a lot more eloquently than I will tonight, but those are the two points that I go to, that we did our part to kind of preserve history of, and character of our community, and we would hope that you would do your part, and that it's not just for us. It doesn't fair, it appear to be unfair or unproportional.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? So just a couple of things I'd like to say is, one, we haven't decided this issue. The trustees haven't voted on it. We haven't submitted any drawings to any contractors to bid out on. The, the drawings will be submitted to contractors in January. Contractors who, who we had submitted to will have the month of February to look at. And they'll come back to the board with quotes for prices in March, and that's when we'll have the first vote, first read by the village board, and we have everything, two reads. So this is, has not been decided. And indeed, one of the options that we are submitting is a full brick street. So that is one of the options that we're going to bid out no matter what. So that is out there. Now, where, with, why this has come up previously is because we have to set a budget. And I work with the staff and the village trustees individually to set a budget. The budget is our guiding principle for the year. We, we don't decide, you know, definitively any issue. We didn't decide Fifth Street or Sixth Street in, in, in any granularity. We talked about it generally. Things change in the budget. We have projects we add, we have projects we drop. It's just our guiding light. We, I tried to keep to it as much as we can, but it certainly isn't a decision. And we have not, as a group, discussed Sixth Street at all, ever. And as I said, one of the things we're submitting to be bid out is a full brick reconstruction of Sixth Street, which I have known that the residents want. So that is something we are submitting. My personal view is that we shouldn't do it. And I, I am very much in favor of historic preservation. If money wasn't an issue, I would be very much in favor of doing an all-brick Sixth Street. But sadly, money is an issue. It's always an issue. We've got pension costs. We've got lots of costs that we have to cover. And again, you guys can, I don't vote, I just present issues to the trustees. But just a couple of things I'd like to point out. So Bill Harlow mentioned that, that, that First Street, well, we did one block in brick, which a lot of residents have brought up to me and said, well, if you did one block in brick on First Street, you should do Sixth Street i- in one block. And, and I think Bill had the right idea. It was, it was a model. First Street was a model. I think one of the trustees referred to it to me as a proof of concept. Well, let me tell you how that proof of concept worked out. When we, when, when this came before the Committee of the Whole, the thought was that the estimate of doing one block on First Street would be two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. When we were done with First Street, it cost two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars more than we budgeted. That's so, so it was one point eight times more money to do it. We wanted to originally use the paver bricks on the street. We couldn't. There were all kinds of problems. It cost us a lot more to do it than we originally thought it would cost us to do. I'm not sure if the trustees had the option to think about doing First Street again, that they would have done it. It was very expensive. And since that time, the cost of, of doing brick street has almost doubled. So it's more expensive than it was to do First Street now. So, so it's, this is from my perspective, purely a cost issue. The trustees will vote on it. They are the decision-makers, not me, but I am the village president, and I really feel I have an obligation to all the village residents. And what, what we put in the budget was a, well, let me just back up. The reason why we're doing Sixth Street now is because there's utility work that needs to be done. Under the, under the agreement we have with Salt Creek and the mandate we have from the Illinois IPA, EPA, we have to do the sewer separation of Sixth Street, and that's going to cost us one point seven million dollars. So that alone is a really expensive project for us. It's one of the biggest sewer replacement projects we've done in the village since I've been village president, fifteen years of infrastructure plan. And one of the reasons we've delayed Sixth Street is because I have been talking to staff for years about how we can do Sixth Street and save the bricks. We talked about, you know, how about if we put the sewer lines outside of the street and put them along the parkway? Can we do that and save the street? The answer was no, because we'd have to cut down all the trees in the parkway, and we'd interfere with all of the utilities in the parkway. How about if we put, somebody suggested we put a grass strip down the middle and just have, have bricks along the, the sides where the cars would go down? We, we ran that up the flagpole. That would actually cost more. How about if we just dig up the middle of Sixth Street, replace the, the, the pipes, and put in the existing brick on top of Sixth Street? How would that work? And engineers come back and tell me, when you drive these forty-ton trucks over Sixth Street to replace the, the, the infrastructure, you're going to make Sixth Street in such a position, a condition that you'll never be able to put it back in the position it is today. So we've thought about all these alternatives, and I've known all along that the, and there's no surprise that the residents want to do it all brick, and they want the village to pay for it. There's, there's nothing new in that respect, and we've always known that. And so the hybrid approach that we've proposed is in the budget, i- is giving the residents of Sixth Street for this four-block area eight hundred thousand dollars to do a hybrid approach, will be partly brick, will be brick for fifty feet on the two ends of the four-block area, the intersections and the crosswalk. And that's what we put in the budget. As I said, we are also putting in a full brick street if the trustees want to do that. My recommendation is we don't, because in addition to the eight hundred thousand dollars to do hybrid, an additional two million dollars to do all brick. And in my estimation, to do an all-brick street for two million extra dollars in one four-block area of the town is just not fair to the other residents of the village. It's not fair to the other obligations we have. I don't think it's comparable to Garfield Street. Garfield Street is a heavily trafficked street. It has lots of truck traffics. We did that in concrete, because the, the, the road is so degraded by, by the amount of truck traffic. Relatively speaking, Sixth Street has a lot less traffic. So, you know, again, we are very much proponents of historic preservation. We're all in favor of it. This has not been decided yet. This will be decided in March. You're, you're welcome to come. We're going to talk to people about how they want to maybe amend the hybrid approach. I don't want to spend any more than eight hundred thousand dollars, but if there's different areas you want to put the brick in, we can talk about that. We'll submit both for a bid. But if, if, if the trustees ask for my recommendation, my recommendation is going to be that we do not spend two hu- two million dollars to put in all brick street just because of the other commitments we have. So it's, it's just purely a numbers issue. So, you know, I, I, I wish we could do it all in brick, from my perspective, but I just think the cost is just prohibitive. So. But we can, you guys are welcome to come back to other meetings. We'll have other meetings on this. We'll be in contact with you about, uh, re- trying to figure out the, the hybrid approach. And then one last thing on the, on the, um, the width of the road. So just so the trustees know, the issue is that because Sixth Street is currently configured with bricks, it has no, it has no apron on it. It's just brick. So when cars have gone over it for the last many, many years, the bricks have kind of spread out. So the road is not of an equal width throughout the, the length of the road. So what the engineers have proposed to do is to try to tighten it up, particularly on the south side, where it's, 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 it's not of a consistent width. But the width proposed for Sixth Street is thirty-one feet. That's the proposed width. First Street is twenty-eight street feet across, so this is three feet wider. Third Street is twenty-eight feet. Seventh Street is twenty-eight feet. Eighth Street is twenty-eight feet. So all the other streets around that area are twenty-eight feet. The proposal for Sixth Street is thirty-one street, feet. The residents have asked that it be a little wider. We can certainly look at that. Of course, that'll cost more, but we'll look at how much it will cost to make it even wider than thirty-one feet. But again, you know, willing to work with residents within the budget we have, but the budget we have is four point five million dollars. If, if, as I, as I said in, in the meeting earlier, if things come in, and when we send this out in February and contractors come back, if the price is a lot less for the utilities or a lot less for the, for the brick, you know, we can have another discussion about putting more brick on Sixth Street with, with what we save on the, from the, the budget amount. But at this point, you know, my, if it's going to be two million dollars extra to, to, to put it all in brick, you know, my answer is, I don't, I don't think that's a good idea, but we haven't decided the issue. These, we haven't, I haven't presented anything to the trustees on it. We have no meeting about it yet, and that'll be something we'll have later. Okay? So we haven't decided anything. Okay? And the, and the problem that you run into in a village, whenever you float an idea, people always assume you've decided it. And, and, and there's, and, and, you know, I sent the letter with two alternatives, because that's what are in the budget. And, and, but I am always open to talk to people about their concerns. And as I said, my cell phone number is on the village website. Call me if you have an issue. I'm always willing to talk to residents about the issue. And if we had unlimited amount of money, that we would all have, be much happier about this situation, but we just don't. And that's, it's, it is what it is. So.
Just a quick question on the budget. I know this isn't on the agenda tonight. But you, you mentioned four point five million in the budget for this. How is that broken down? We've got one point seven million for the sewer replacement?
Yeah. So the numbers, well, what I really, it's, it's four point five, and I can give you the more details. But the numbers are estimates, right?
Right.
They're not.
Yep. We haven't got any.
But what I really, I would, I really asked the staff to drill in on today and give me solid numbers, was the difference between asphalt and the hybrid. That's eight hundred thousand dollars. The difference between the hybrid and all brick, that's two million dollars. And, and then, and then it's one point seven million in utilities. And those numbers we vetted the last couple of days. Again, when we send them out to bid, we may be surprised. They may be coming higher than that and coming lower than that. We don't know.
And what year was First Street done?
Two thousand sixteen. So it's eight years ago. That's, and the cost have increased dramatically since then.
And just to be clear, how many blocks were done on First Street?
One.
Parked out.
Parked out. Anybody else? So we've heard you. We'll take it under advisement. You know, maybe we'll come back with, with numbers from the contractors. It'll be pleasant surprise to us, but, you know. We've been doing this for a long time. I think we're pretty good on the numbers, but we, we'll see. Anybody else from trustees?
I'm sorry to get into details on this one. It's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
But on First Street, the remaining blocks that are not parked out, what are those?
Elm to County Line.
No, he, he, I think you're talking, we're building to.
Yeah, what type of material?
They're brick, right?
Brick, yeah.
They're the old brick?
Yeah, yeah.
There's two, there's two blocks that are old brick.
Yeah.
One new brick and one asphalt.
Yeah. Elm to Garfield is asphalt. No, uh, parked, I'm sorry.
Parked, parked, parked to Garfield.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, if there's nothing else on that. I think Matt, you're up.
Yeah. All right. This is item seven A. It's a first read, and this is to approve blanket purchase orders for two thousand twenty-four. These are used when the village makes frequent purchases throughout the year in excess of village manager's spending authority of twenty thousand dollars. The list is very similar to last year. It includes five vendors where we had standalone purchase orders for last year in addition to the ones where we had blanket purchase orders, and then there are seven new ones. Amazon Capital Services, Bullseye Telecom, First Communications, Rachel Russo, which is a, a social media marketing consultant, Toshiba Financial Solutions, which leases us our copiers, Total Parking, which handles our pay system for parking, and then TPI Building Code Consultants, which helps out our staff with plan reviews and plumbing inspections. And all these purchase orders are reflected in the two thousand twenty-four budget that we're going to be discussing later today. Carrie, anything else to add there?
You think you pretty much hit on the head. The only thing for the trustees, if you recall, this has happened a little bit later. Normally, we're trying to accelerate the process so that we can get through a first and a second read at the very beginning of next fiscal year, so we can get these things entered into our accounting system before staff needs to start incurring the expenditures.
Can we put this on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
So if we put on the consent agenda, you pretty much can go with it, right?
Yeah, we don't anticipate any additional blanket POs or changes to this list.
Okay. Okay, then accounts payable?
I have the bag, found everything in order. Make a motion to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three through December fifth, two thousand twenty-three, in the aggregate amount of three million eight hundred fifty-two thousand twenty-three dollars and seventy cents set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, of which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk. Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden? Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
We have a motion with respect to consent agenda items of eight B through eight I.
Move to approve consent agenda items eight B through eight I.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden? Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
Matt?
Okay. So we have items nine A through nine G, second reads. And as you may recall, at our last meeting, we held a public hearing regarding our property tax levy of twelve million three hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. It's a five point six, seven percent increase. And so now what we need to do is to pass the ordinance levying that amount. Legally, we need to levy an amount sufficient to pay all of our principal and interest owing this year on our bonds. That gross levy is fifteen million five hundred and seventy-seven thousand seventy-five dollars. And then what we do is we abate that levy where there is an alternative revenue source for the payment of those bonds. So there's six bond issues where there is an alternative revenue source totaling three million one hundred and ninety-eight thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars, leaving us with a net levy, again, as I said, twelve million three hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. This includes a library levy of three million six hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars that was approved at the last library board meeting. So we have seven motions. We have an ordinance for the gross levy, and we have six abating resolutions. And Carrie, do we need to vote separately on each of the seven? I know we have to read all the motions, but can we?
I think they can be voted on as one, but they have to be read separately.
Okay, okay. So before I do that, any questions? Okay, well, then I'll, I'll read the seven motions. So first, move to approve an ordinance levying taxes for corporate purposes for the fiscal year of the village of Hinsdale, Illinois, commencing on January one, two thousand twenty-three, and ending on December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three, in the aggregate amount of fifteen million five hundred and seventy-seven seventy thousand seventy-five dollars. Second, move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal of an interest on two million seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. General obligation refunding bonds, library fund, tax, alternate revenue source, series two thousand thirteen A of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Third, move to approve resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal of an interest on two million twenty-five thousand dollars. General obligation bonds, waterworks and sewage system alternate revenue source, series two thousand fourteen A of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Fourth, move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal of an interest on five million dollars. General obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand fourteen B of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Fifth, move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal of an interest on nine million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. General obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand seventeen A of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Sixth, move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal of an interest on twenty million dollars. General obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand eighteen A of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. And then finally, move to approve a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal of an interest on two million six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. General obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand twenty-one of the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. of the Village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Somebody second the motion?
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden? Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
All right. Next, we go to items 9H and 9I. Again, second reads regarding the DePage Water Commission. As we stated at the last meeting, the village buys its water from the DePage Water Commission along with 27 other municipalities. Then the commission currently buys water from the city of Chicago, which it takes from Lake Michigan. So both of these contracts expire early next year. So first, we're going to approve a new contract between the village and the Page Water Commission. This is a form agreement that all the members have to sign and has a 40-year term. So it'll expire in 2064. And it's non-terminable, 40-year contract. The contract does provide for the flexibility of the commission to purchase water from a source other than the city of Chicago. And I'll get into that in a second when we talk about that contract. And under the original contract, there was a minimum volume required on the part of the village that they were required to buy from the commission. Now it's a little bit different system. To the extent we don't buy our allocation, we have to pay our share of the fixed and operating costs of the system if we don't purchase that full amount. But as we talked about before, while this is a 40-year, non-terminable agreement, the village really doesn't have any other options in terms of where it can get its water. So we're recommending that we enter into this new contract with the DePage Water Commission. Any questions about the customer contract? So I will move to approve an ordinance approving a water purchase and sale contract between the DePage Water Commission and contract customers.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden? Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
So then item 9I is the next DePage Water Commission item. This is to approve an extension of the existing water supply agreement with the city of Chicago. The current expiry date is early next year, March 2024. The commission would like to extend this contract by 15 to 20 years. During the extension, the commission plans to negotiate with the city of Chicago, hopefully to obtain a more beneficial cost structure based on a cost of service structure similar to what the city of Joliet has recently negotiated with the city of Chicago. There's also a most favored nation provision in the contract, which by extending the contract, the commission should be able to take advantage of. A 15- to 20-year extension also gives the commission some time to explore alternate sources of water if the negotiations with the city do not work to the commission's satisfaction. Are there any questions on that agreement? Okay. In that case, I will move to approve an ordinance approving an extension of the water supply contract between the DePage Water Commission and the city of Chicago.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden? Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
So next, we have item 9J. This is a second read to approve the 2024 annual budget. This has a few different components. The 2024 operating budget, the capital improvement plan for 2024 through 2028, the 2024 master infrastructure plan, and then a proposed reserve policy for the general fund and the water sewer fund. Staff has been working on this for a number of months in various meetings with President Colley and the other trustees, as well as members of the Finance Commission. And obviously, trustees have also had a chance to discuss that with staff since the last meeting. At the last meeting, staff gave a detailed presentation on the budget. Since the last meeting, there've been a few minor tweaks to the Water Operations Fund. We talked a little bit about having a water leak detection survey, so that's an additional expense of $100,000. And then there's a change in expenditures for water meter reading software, which will add another $4,600 to the 2024 budget. So that'll be a total increase to that fund of $104,600. While we're not going to have the more detailed discussion again today, just at a high level to summarize, with the operating budget we're going to have, we're budgeting $24.2 million of operating revenues and $21.2 million of operating expenses. That'll leave us, according to the budget, with a operating fund balance at the end of the year of $5.6 million, which will represent 26.5%, which is above the 25% number that the rating agencies look for. The capital improvement plan is going to be $4.2 million in expenditures. And there's going to be a $1.5 million transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. And then the master infrastructure plan, we're going to have $7.3 million in budgeted expenses. And there's going to be a $2 million transfer from the general fund. Any questions about any of the components of the budget?
The addition of $100,000 for water detection system, what is that? Do you have to find leaks?
Yes.
Yes. At the last meeting, we talked about having a consultant come in.
Right.
So we put a placeholder of $100,000 in there so we could go out to bid next year, find a consultant to evaluate our system.
Good. Okay. Great. That's what I thought. Okay.
Any other questions? Well, again, thanks very much to staff for all your hard work on it. And I think the budget looks in really good shape. In that case, I will move to approve the proposed 2024 annual budget that includes the proposed 2024 to 2028 capital improvement program, the proposed 2024 master infrastructure program, and the proposed general fund and water sewer fund reserve policy.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden? Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
Thanks to the staff for the hard work on this. One more to go.
One more to go. And we can pass it to Luke. Let's see. Item 9K. So this is a second read due to time sensitivity. So in March of 2023, there was an Illinois state law passed called the Paid Leave for All Workers Act. And it established a minimum paid leave requirement for all workers in the state of Illinois. This law is going to become effective on January 1 of 2024. And there is a carve-out from this law for any municipality that is covered by an ordinance which provides for minimum paid leave for its employees that's in effect prior to January 1, 2024. So what we would like to do is to put in a minimum paid leave policy that covers all of our employees so that we can, in essence, opt out of the new statute that's coming into effect. So some of our groups of employees already have paid leave policies. But what the ordinance is going to do is a couple of things. First of all, to codify some part-time benefits that have already been approved by the board in the past. And then also to add some minimal benefits, one hour, actually, for our seasonal and temporary employees who, as you might expect, don't always, you know, get paid leave offered. But we have to provide for this minimal requirement for these seasonal and temporary employees in order to be able to opt out of the statute that's coming into effect. Tracy, anything else to add there?
I think the only thing I'd add is that the one hour of paid leave will be awarded to the employee after 90 days of employment. And so it is our intention, moving into the pool season, that we will not have all employees work in excess of 90 days. However, since our pool is open from Memorial Day through Labor Day and we need to provide staffing and then training, of course, before the pool opens, we will have some. But we estimate the impact to the budget to be less than $1,000. It will affect 14 roles at the village who work for the village 12 months out of the year. They're regular, part-time employees who currently don't have any sort of paid leave benefit. They will get the minimum one hour. So we do have 14 employees year-round that will get the hour. And then we need to award that also to seasonal and temporaries after 90 days. But we're going to try to hold that to a minimum.
And I assume the 90-days requirement complies with the statute?
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Then in that case, I will move to approve an ordinance approving paid leave benefits required for village employees.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden? Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
I'll take this. The issue relating to the exterior appearance and site plan for the installation of a brick wall and bollards at Fuller's is going to be off this agenda. We're going to take it up next time. We had a structural engineer look at it to assess the effectiveness of the bollards. And we've asked that some changes be made.